And we'll let it go at that. I've already spoke to him about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hartman.
Bob Hartman, Chair of Country Estates HOA. We are planning a barbecue. Everybody's invited for March the 26th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's going to be at Country Estates Park at Griffin and 190th Avenue. We're gonna have a live band, or maybe a DJ, but we're gonna have music. A bounce house, face painting, cookie. Same thing as last year, but hopefully even better participation. We had about 120 people last year where we'd really like to increase that. We really, really want to get people to know each other in our community. We look at some of the other HOAs around town that are smaller from an overall area standpoint that are bigger than we are and we're looking at ways to try to bring the community together. Although, this is open for everybody, the entire community. We had at last year's, I know that Vince and Ruth were there, I think Dee and her family were there, Doug, people from all over the community were there. So, we want to replicate that and then some. So, that'll be on March the 26th. It's after church, hopefully we'll even get the church people in that are coming through town at the same time. So, come out, meet your neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Haley, who just walked in, would you like to speak? Okay. All right. All right. Public comment is closed?
There'll be some flyers by the back door.
Any board reports? Now, board reports today?
Yes.
Astor. Okay, Astor, how are you?
Yes. On behalf of the Parks Foundation, we'll be having our great, wonderful annual Chili Cook-Off on Saturday. And I understand it's going to be a great competition right up here and down here. So, we're looking forward to have a good attendance. And I'll just take this opportunity to let you know that this will be my last meeting as a resident of this great town.
Don't be a stranger.
I won't be. The foundation is still going strong and I'll be an honorary member of this community as long as I live. So, I'll be coming back as often as I can and participating where I can. So, thanks for all the support I've got over the years and thank you for allowing me to contribute to this town of ours. I love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Astor. Any other board comments? All right, councilmember comments. Anybody'd like to go first?
I'll go. Gary, go ahead. Yeah, I'll be brief. A couple of items were already mentioned. Oh, by the way, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. I always want to say that. As everybody knows, we have the, Astor just mentioned the Chili Cook-Off. As everybody knows, can you hear me now? Can you up the mic? Okay, thank you. We have the Chili Cook-Off. Even I can hear that. We have the Chili Cook-Off this Saturday and I'm one of the contestants and I've been working away all week on it and I need everybody to come.
The reigning champion, I believe.
No, just one of those guys. One of those guys who got lucky. And anyway, we got, I've got, you know, me and eight gallons of chili are ready to rock and roll this Saturday. And that's the secret, if you bring enough chili, because everybody else runs out, and you're the only vote in the last two hours. So, there's a method. Anyway, just kidding on that. Then we have that night, we have the Ranchers of Distinction Dinner at Trop Lakers. Tickets, I believe, are still available. If you're interested, go to the front desk. That's for this Saturday. Then we have Water Matters on the 11th out at Tree Top Park. And our very own December is in charge of that and she does a fantastic job. And I hope to see everybody there. It's a fun day, it's a fun morning, it's a great place to take the family out and really see what the impact is of the Everglades, our water system, our aquifer. Everything under the sun that deals with water can be found at that venue. And it's a lot of fun. And it's right over here on 100th and Griffin Road at Tree Top Park. I urge everybody to go see that. And Bob, of course, just mentioned the Country Estates Barbecue and we'll mention that more as we get to a closer date. Went to the one last year, it was great, whole family was there, it was very enjoyable. And, you know, we got a lot going on with that. So, and that's basically.
Would you like to go next? Dee, go ahead.
Well, I too happen to be one of the contestants, so get ready. And I'm a last-minute person, just throw it in and it usually works. But I'd like to say, Astor, you're really not going to be missed because you're still going to be here. So, I'm gonna see you all out. So, I've got some pots out front with little plants in them. We've got your own little circle already started. I did that when I got home. And like I said, you're not gonna be missed too much because you're gonna be a big part of this town and you're gonna be around here an awful lot. So, with that, good luck. And I definitely want to get to the new house. I want to be invited over for, at least for tea. I know that's late in the afternoon, but I'll make it. Thank you.
Freddie, you want to go? Okay, Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say a couple of words, Astor. I just, you know, I'm talking right into it, Vince, there's not much more I can do. You know, from the very start, when I moved into this town and first started learning about folks around town and visited in at the Rolling Oaks HOA, you know. Saw you there, you were active, you were working, you were participating, you were volunteering, you were kind of the, a lot of the energy behind, there's a lot of folks with energy there, so. But you were one of them and just the way you continued to give through that process, you know, became on the council and gave that way. And even after you left the council, you continued to just give and give. And this community is a much stronger community, it's a much better community. It's a community that, you know, is really a family in a large degree because of what you did and what you continue to do. And I'm with the, I don't want to see you go anywhere. You may move your residence, but your place is right here, so we want to see you often. But thank you for all you've done. I want to make just one other comment, just a report on the church that's way out west, the Segadoris Church there. We're continuing to make progress there in a number of ways. Kind of a, I'll say, two steps forward, one step back in that the parking issue, I think, is much better, much more under control. And that's in a large degree because the church out there is taking it seriously and they're partnering with us, so we appreciate that. We still have some things to clean up. They're putting some tape out there and not cleaning it up afterwards and it looks not the way it should look. So, still some lessons to be learned, some things to be improved, but I am glad that that's improving. As far as the traffic is concerned, Broward County has been excellent. They're working on adjusting the lights, the timing of the lights on Griffin Road, both at Bonaventure and at Dykes. And they started to work on that a little bit. They're kind of doing it, phasing it in, making small adjustments and they're tracking all the traffic. And they'll continue to make that adjustment till it's right. And so, Scott Runer at Broward County is doing an excellent job like he always does. And his staff was out there last week, they're gonna be out there this week and they're gonna continue to tune it, so that's good as well. So, hopefully that's not gonna go away, but hopefully it's gonna continue to improve. Thanks.
Okay. Again, Astor, you're embedded in this town. Even though you're leaving and moving somewhere else, you're still here, buddy. So, you can't get away. So, we greatly appreciate the time you've given in donating and contributing to this town and wow. What a bang-up job. Hopefully you'll continue to join us in Tallahassee as regularly as you do because you've opened a lot of doors, you know a lot of people for being 10 years ahead of me. It's been greatly appreciated. So, as you know, the door's always open, you're welcome anytime. This town is always your town, even though you're moving out. So, greatly appreciate it and thanks for all you've done. Aside from that, Chili Cook-Off this weekend and the Ranchers of Distinction Dinner, Trop L Acres. So, if anybody wants to join us and come to that, feel free to come to Town Hall, you can get a ticket and join us. Other than that, I'm good, so.
Go right ahead. It's kind of more of a regret and an apology, actually, because I was really excited about the events this weekend and I certainly encourage everybody to come out to them. I actually have a family wedding up in Orlando and I'm not gonna be able to be at any of them. And honestly, I was very disappointed that I wasn't able to do that. But I do encourage everybody to come out. I actually told my wife, no, I can't go. And that lasted about, I'm gonna say about 40 minutes. And then I knew for sure I was going, so. So, but I know it's gonna be great events and sorry that I won't be able to join them.
We're all on board with family comes first, so we understand, Steve. You make it to most, if not all, events, so. We'll lend you a pass. Okay. Let's see, legal comments?
Mayor, it's always my great pleasure to be out here with you. Thinking about suggesting a new name for the town, Village of Hospitality. Maybe just a junior name. I was telling my wife this afternoon that you guys are just always great. It's a real pleasure and I'm sure that your community better.
Thank you. And it's a pleasure to have you join us this evening. Administrative, let's see, I guess Andy, you're up, buddy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, everything that I had on my list, the council has covered. The only thing that I just want to add to something that you did all cover, I want to wish Astor all the best. I mean, the whole time I've been here, Astro, you've been nothing but a friend, you've been supportive, you provided great insight and I really appreciate that. I thank you for that and I hope that you continue to drop into this building just as often as you have in the past. And I will tell you all that I did threaten Astro at one point recently. I told him I was gonna slap a big lien on his property so that the closing wouldn't go through and we'd be able to keep him. But I wasn't able to do that. So, I, but I did threaten him with it. I obviously wanted to keep him here at almost any price. But Astro, we wish, you know, speaking certainly for myself and all the staff, we wish you all the best.
That's it, huh? You're welcome. Russell, looks like you're up to bat.
Mayor, we have an ordinance on second reading. It's an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled Definition of Terms. To define newly regulated terms, amending Article 45, entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-050, uses permitted to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 50, entitled Commercial Districts, Section 050-040, permitted uses in Section 050-080, limitations of uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses. Prohibit or restrict certain additional uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 55, entitled M Manufacturing and Industrial Districts, Section 55-040, permitted and prohibited uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 60, entitled CF Community Facility Districts, Section 060-030, permitted uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 65, entitled Recreation and Open Space Districts, Section 065-030, permitted uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective. Motion to approve.
Do we have a?
Motion is second after this, then we do the other part?
Do you do the motion to amend if you're going to put forward an amendment?
Okay, do we, but vote on this first, right? Okay.
I think you, yeah, you need to get it on the table by just a voice vote.
Okay, so go ahead and call the question.
Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have to do?
I would like to make a motion to add a whereas clause on the previous ordinance motion. Russell, could you read that so everybody knows?
I don't have my copy.
I wonder who has it. Sorry about that.
You've got a second from Steve, by the way.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Breckus, the second, the whereas clause to be added is, whereas until the Florida legislature has fully addressed the rules and regulations for cannabis dispensaries, the town desires to enact a moratorium on such commercial enterprises and to revisit this issue after the Florida legislature has acted.
Okay, any discussion? Any public comment? Seen no public comment, public comment closed. Go ahead, Russell.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Make a motion to adopt as amended?
Second.
Any public comment? Seen no public comment, public comment closed?
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Number nine, Russell?
Number nine is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2017 through 2021 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Any public comment? Seen no public comment, public comment closed? Any discussion up here? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with PHI Construction for fabricating and installing three entranceway signs, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date. Motion to approve.
Any public comment?
New Orleans, 198th Avenue. Since it wasn't in the header, I'd like to know what the cost is going to be of this purchase order. And also, since there wasn't any backup provided for the public for this meeting, I'd like to know where the locations are of these three signs that are entranceway signs. And whether or not they're actually near the entranceway of our town. Otherwise, as I've been saying, we should put one sign at the middle of Dyke's Road and on both sides say, welcome to Southwest Ranches, and that's all we have to do because that's where a lot of the signs are. They're not at the entranceways, they're three-quarters of a mile and whatever. So, thank you. How much and where are they located?
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Avenue. And did he charge us the same price as the last time?
Anyone else? Seen no more public comment, public comment closed? Counsel? Dee, go ahead.
Well, we were at that last meeting and we were discussing that. And for some reason, I want to say somewhere around $27,000. The price was somewhere around $27,000. Does that sound about right, Doug? You were there.
Yeah, 27.612.
27.612. There was three locations at first, but the one location, the sign couldn't be placed, actually in our town, it would have to go out onto Flamingo. Sheridan, it would have to go out onto Sheridan. So, what they decided was to put one away in case a car would hit one or one would get destroyed, they'd have one for some backup so we wouldn't have to put it back out and try to get it as quickly as we could. The other two, Griffin and Bonaventure. Yeah, and Griffin and Dykes in the medium just west of Dykes. So, those were the other two locations. And the other one, the third one, we're going to keep as a reserve and just put it in storage. But they're all three going to be made at the same time.
Okay, any other comment?
Just, I don't know, is this the same price? Do you know off Tucker Head or Marty, is this the same cost per sign as we had before?
Yes, officially, it's close to it. I'd have to defer to engineering and Emily and Rod.
It might get reduced, it might get reduced just a little bit because we're not installing the third one, is my guess. Andy, could you check with that or see?
We may save the installation cost.
That's what I'm saying.
But this completes a multi-year project that's been handled by the Rural Public Art Board. Through the 10 locations, which will actually be nine when it's completed, this item was budgeted for, in this year's budget, in order to complete that project. And the price remained the same as was competitively bid originally.
Okay. We call the question, Russell?
Please.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
All right. 11.
11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, commending the Florida Association of City Clerks on its 45th anniversary and providing an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we're gonna pass this over to Marty? Is Marty handling this or who's handling this?
This was an item that I?
Oh, okay, for you, that's right.
Simply, basically, a template resolution that all the cities are passing commemorating the 45th anniversary of the Florida Association of City Clerks. An organization that myself and Yvette Solera, our deputy town clerk, is a part of. It's just a goodwill-type resolution, not a lot of substance behind it, just wishing them well.
Mayor, well, I like to disagree pretty strongly with that statement. You know, I, you know, I agree with what you said, but what it is to me is it's a reminder of how important the position is and how fortunate we are to have yourself, Yvette, here to do an excellent job. There's a lot of, you know, it's one of those jobs that if you do it right, nobody really hears about it. But if you don't do it right, then everybody hears about it. So, I don't hear a whole lot about it, so I know it's been done very well and professionally. So, thanks for all you do.
All right, any other comment? Got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Next item. Budget calendar, discussion, who's gonna have this? Andy's gonna have this?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may kick it off.
Go ahead.
This is, Marty, I think this represents what our sixth budget together here? Hard to believe, time flies when you have them.
That's correct.
And it is, it always seems to be budget season in finance. But you all have a copy, the budget calendar is, Marty has prepared previously, color-coordinated to show different roles of staff and council and public input. And so, we offer that calendar up for certainly council consensus as we begin to move forward and kick off our annual budget process. Mayor, I would be doing a great disservice if I didn't toss it to my partner in crime over there, Mr. Sherwood, to put in a few words.
Go ahead. Marty, you're up to bat.
Thank you, town administrator Andy Burns, mayor, council. Yes, we're dealing with our calendar, this is our kickoff tonight. But before I go into the detailed calendar, it is not often that the town gets a chance to welcome a new employee who happens to be in the audience tonight. So, I'd like you to stand up, Ms. Vanessa Redg, Redman, excuse me. Redman is our new accounting clerk. As you know, Mara Semper was promoted over to the procurement and budget officer position. And we had an opening for an accounting clerk, a rare opening. We had over 70 applicants. We're proud to have Vanessa here from the private sector. She has a associate's degree from Broward College in accounting, which is very well welcomed within the finance department and the town. So, I know you've all met her over the last couple of weeks. This is her first Town Council meeting, so I'd like to welcome her to the community, the residents, and to the Comcast video listeners tonight. So, thank you, Vanessa, for being here tonight. Now, going directly into our proposed budget calendar, no surprises, we're similar as Andy mentioned, this is our sixth year of kickoff for the budget process. It started with staff on February 14th at our last staff meeting. So, we have deadlines for staff, we have deadlines as it pertains to council. In that regard, the first update to your calendar, you will note in green, which were the tentative dates for the Broward County School Boards and the Broward County Government. The green and blue lines, you will see those highlighted in red. Those are no longer tentative, those are set. I had preliminary hearing dates, they've been finalized, so they're set in stone. Moving on to the top, specifically tonight as it relates to the council, is really the color yellow. Tonight, as you will see, is the Thursday, the February 23rd. It's our memo to the Town Council and our proposed calendar. Tonight, that once you approve it, that will become our official adopted framework and timeframe for the entire budget process for fiscal year 2017 and '18. We, as you could see, moving down, the budget book is scheduled to be finished, distributed on July 14th of '17. And there is one I skipped going back up into the second yellow, I apologize. We'll be meeting individually with council from approximately March 9th to May 19th. That gives us a little over 60 days to meet with you all on a one-on-one, which we normally do to get your policy direction, to be able to get your priorities direction from council. During that time, Andy, Russell and I, as necessary, meet with advisory boards during that time to get their feedback and input. And your advisory board heads are the liaisons with that process as well. Our first actual action date is our preliminary millage and initial assessment date of Thursday, July 27th. After that, we'll have our once-a-year annual budget workshop where we get feedback from you after the proposed budget is distributed, more feedback from the advisory boards, the public. That will take place on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. And all the community is invited. I encourage all those who are residents, community, interested parties to attend at that time. There'll be further announcements, of course, and this will all be advertised in accordance with Florida statutes. We have, the only big change is our first hearing, which is Wednesday, September 13th. We cannot have it on September 14th, normally our second Thursday of the month because the Broward County Government has priority. County Government and the school board has priority over the local government. So, we, our timeframe can only be between the 12th and the 15th. And you could see that the school board's taking the 12th and the Broward County's taking the school board's taking the 12th, and the Broward County's taking the 14th. So the window there is only the 13th, unless we wanted it on Friday, the 15th. And I know we don't want to have a Friday meeting necessarily on that night. So we are proposing tonight with Wednesday, September 3rd, with that change, which council will notify in accordance with statutes, as necessary to the public. The final hearing will be Thursday, September 28th. That'll be in advance of our normal, regular, of our normal, regular council meeting at 7:00 PM. And we allot an hour, because we normally are able to resolve any discrepancies or differences we have by that time. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn it back to the mayor to get any feedback or open discussion, and get approval by council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gentleman?
I just have to make one quick comment, that I'm pleased that my birthday fell on a Friday night this year, so that I actually get away without a meeting, so thank you for...
You get exemptions Fridays and Sundays.
Although it sounds like you were considering it, the 15th.
Yeah, I just like to chime in here. Great job, Marty. You got it all laid out, it's all mapped out, we've got a plan, you know, carry it forward. I'm, you know, this is a discussion item, I'm a definite yes, everything, you know, and it can, and it can be adjusted as we go along.
Absolutely. Any other input? And no more input? Everybody's good? Everybody's good? Awesome. Do you hear motion to approve this?
Discussion item?
No? Discussion item? You don't want anything? Okay. Yeah, public comment? Go ahead. Jump in here.
Yeah, Mayor.
I didn't think you'd care about the dates, but okay.
Mayor, while we was walking up, if, at the conclusion, if you just call the roll and just express consensus for us to move forward with that.
No problem.
Staff would appreciate it.
Will do.
Newell Hollingsworth, 199. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak at your discussion. What we have with the budget is now three years of millage increases. I think it's time, and I will work towards not having any additional millage increase this year. And I believe we need to digest what we have increased. We went quite a while without a budget increase by millage, and now we've gone three years in a row with additional millage increases for various different reasons. And we need to adjust ourselves to those smorgasbord that we have given ourselves in tax dollars. The other thing is that, same as I said last year, the more information, the better. I would like to say, see where on the line item where it says "Infrastructure projects," and it says "X amount of dollars," that we have a listing of all of the infrastructure projects that are planned that equal that X amount of dollars in the budget. In other words, you say Project A, Project B, Project C equals X. And on the line item where it says "Infrastructure," it says X. So whatever that is, be the same, and also for the other departments, where if we're going to say we're going to have, say, in parks, we're going to have A, B, and C, which is a total amount of this, we list what those projects are. And the same thing for any other department, and also to show us what the increase is over last year, and the reason for that. The more information that you can give us, the public, the better and easier it is for you to not have to sit in front of the camera and explain to us why this is taking place. Or maybe it'll be just on a specific project, part of it. So I would hope that you would give us more information instead of less information. And last year, we got some additional information, but it still wasn't enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, public comment closed. Back to us.
Should we do a motion? Do we do a motion to clarify it, or does it really not?
Andy would like us to go through us to, we're on board with it.
Yeah, just a motion expressing approval of the budget calendar as it's been articulated tonight. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to express that we're on board.
And I'll second your expression that we're on board.
Before we vote, I did want to make one comment, if we could. Just, you know, the folks, I think, that are watching may not know the history of the millage, so I just wanted to just clarify that a little bit. The basic millage for our town has been very steady for a very long number of years, I think four or five years, up until this past year, when it did go up for our normal operating. Newell is correct that the two prior years to that, it did go up, but it was for a sole purpose project that is going on called Tisdore. That project is a, basically about a 25-year-long project where the goal was to repave all the streets in the town. And so to fund that particular project, the two years prior to that, as well as last year, the millage did go up. But the base millage for operating your town stayed steady for all those years. Up until this past year, it did go up, just because it was steady for a long time, and over that time period, costs have risen. So eventually, we did have to increase it a little bit. But obviously, the goal was always to try and not raise the millage, and to hold down all the costs for the residents and still provide great value to them.
Anyone else? No? You want to call the question?
Councilmember Schroeder? Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Minutes?
Thank you, Marty. I'll make a motion to approve, and I'd like to add something. Nothing wrong with the, nothing wrong with the minutes. I was just reading the first page, and I was reading something that Dee had mentioned last time, and I meant to say this in council member comments, and totally forgot about it. And I just want to warn the public out there that there is a group of individuals running around right now who are taking advantage of our residents by offering them a very discounted price, cheap price, on black topping the driveway. We go through this every year. And they tangled with a, an older individual in Rolling Oaks who was pretty spry, and ended up doing a pretty good job for 40 bucks. And then, and she sent them packing. And, but I just want to mention that the job was morphing into several hundred dollars until she put her foot down. And so I just want everybody to realize that they're out there, and they are preying on individuals, and it is a bit of a scam, what they're doing. And so I just want to mention that. Meanwhile, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Any public comment? Because we've been corrected in the past. Seeing no public comment, public comment closed. Call the question. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Amen. All right. Is that a record, by the way? Or did you beat it? What was your record? 28 minutes? Newell, you blew it. I would have, I would have had it if you didn't get there and talk that long.